I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the July 23 regular meeting of the Hoboken Board of Education. Mr. Bolden, you read the statement of compliance?
Surely. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act NJ SA 10-4-6 at sequencia. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on July 18, 2019, and July 20, 2019. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable TV channel 77 and files channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in electronic age of computers, cellphones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the great and justicious law. And the roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatori?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Mr. Delatorre?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Ms. Conna?
Here.
Mr. Kupfo?
Here.
Ms. McWork?
Here.
Ms. Takarian?
Here.
Ms. Angley. We have a quorum.
Thank you. There are no recognitions tonight?
No, there are not.
So we'll move right into reports. Superintendent's reports, deserve it.
Yeah, good evening. I have a brief report for tonight, just to give some updates regarding what's going on in the summer and a sneak peek into the upcoming school year, although there will be a much more comprehensive report regarding next year's programs at our August meeting. So we are having an extremely busy summer. We're finishing up all of our moves so that everybody knows all of our spaces here at the second floor in the Demarest School have been moved over to the fourth floor in Calabro. In addition to child study team offices, part team offices, master teacher team offices, a professional development classroom have all been put into place in the Calabro School. The left side of the hallway of the Demarest School on the second floor is being converted right now and should be done probably within the next week or two in converting some of the offices that were on the left-hand side to classrooms to accommodate the growth and enrollment in our middle school for September. We also have a lot of programs that are going on, so in addition to the moves and staffing that are going on in the summer, our summer band and instrumental camp has been in full swing for the last couple of weeks with students of all ages have been participating. Our summer theater camp is once again an extremely popular program in the summer, and on July 31, they will be hosting an end-of-the-summer production, so that if you'd like to go in and watch all of the children perform, it would be wonderful. They would love to have you there. We are about to start LEAP next week. LEAP is our summer program. It's a leap into summer learning. The program is offered to incoming students in kindergarten through eighth grade. It's going to take place over at the Wallace School, just so that we have the ability to consolidate locations in terms of where we're going. But that program is set and ready to go. It's completely staffed. All of the curriculum has been written for the program, and it mirrors the school day. So for all children who are participating in LEAP, they will attend just like they would a regular school day. There's before care and there's after care as well, so it really helps prepare kids for the upcoming school year. I also wanted to make sure the Board of Education knew that the LEAP program, just like our Passport to Learning and our Passport to Wellness program, is tiered on a financial basis. So any family with children that qualify for free lunch, children can attend the LEAP program at no cost. Any families with children that qualify for reduced lunch pay a 30% rate, and full payment is for families that do not qualify for either. So it's accessible to children of any financial background. In addition, this summer, we have completed, I would say, well over 13 new curriculum documents, as well as the revision of probably 20 different curriculum documents as well. We're getting ourselves ready for the school year, but most importantly, we're writing curriculum for new courses that are going to be offered at Hoboken High School and also for enrichment courses at the elementary school and junior PGP courses at the middle school. As you know, we participated in a two-and-a-half-day administrative team and leadership team retreat in Pennsylvania. The team went to Lower Marion High School to participate in a University of Pennsylvania Consortium for Excellence and Equity. The conference was incredible. We had 20 members of our administrative team and teacher leader team that went to the retreat, and the workshops were not only enlightening, but also provided us with some strategies and some activities that we could bring back into the district immediately. So we're excited about that. We also have a number of staff members and administrators who will be attending the statewide conference on equity on July 31 as well, and that will be held in Trenton. And lastly, myself, some of our principals and our assistant superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez-Gomez, are in the process of finalizing plans for our new staff orientation, which will be a two-day program during the last week of August, as well as the superintendent's convocation on the first day of school back for our staff and the professional development day that follows. Just a little sneak peek into next year, but again, I will provide something much more comprehensive at the next board meeting. The Bridge Program that we offered at the Wallace Elementary School will in fact be continuing for the following school year. The decision needed to be made if we were going to continue to run it for our lower elementary grades, or if we were going to actually roll it to third through fifth grade. We're actually going to roll it to third through fifth grade, as that's where our numbers kind of look like they're needed most. For those of you who are not sure what our Bridge Program is, or can't quite remember if at one point you were told about it, the Bridge Program is actually a regular education program that's held in the Wallace School, yet it services both regular education and special education children who need some time to transition into the school day with some early morning group activities and some counseling. They end the school day with a touchpoint session as well, and during the school day, children in the Bridge Program sometimes participate in academics for a full day in Bridge, and sometimes they will fluidly go back and forth between the Bridge Program to the regular education classroom depending on their needs. There's a range of sensory equipment for the children to regulate behavior and to help them with the self-regulation of their behavior. So we're excited about that. We're also going to be rolling out the kindergarten-through-fifth-grade Individualized Pathways Program, which will take place, take the place of the formerly-known challenge and support period. The Individualized Pathways Program will, is one step closer to helping us meet the individualized needs of every child in both math and language arts literacy on a daily basis. So we're very excited about that, and we're going to be doing a lot of professional development for our staff members. We are greatly expanding the middle school Passport to Wellness Program. So for those of you who haven't heard, Passport to Wellness Program has added a range of programs for middle school students, including everything from rock climbing to kayaking, stand-up paddle boarding, sailing next year, archery, table tennis.
Fencing.
Yeah, fencing, hip-hop dance, a little of everything, and all of these programs follow an hour-long program of academic support, homework help, and tutoring. So we're exciting about, excited about that. Also, for the first time, we're going to be having a middle school musical. I'm not yet at liberty to announce what the musical will be, although we do know that will be announced at one time at the start of the school year. But Danielle Miller and her partner here at the middle school are really excited about the first time, so it'll be a production on this stage solely dedicated to middle school children. We're also extremely excited about the middle school junior PGP program. This is very similar to the high school PGP program, but we've changed some of the course offerings. So next year, at the middle school, the courses that will be offered during this junior PGP program range from junior Harvard Model Congress to junior Model UN Robotics and Automation to Computer Science to Makerspace Development and Genius Hour to Philosophy and Poetry Slam and Writers Workshop, Mathletes, Scienceletes. And also, one of the things that we're really excited about will be our second year of the Environmental Crusaders Program, and we will in fact be able to have the kids in that particular program, which looks like it will be having five full sections running of Environmental Crusaders down in our brand-new wet lab. So last year, they kind of thought about and invented in their heads what that wet lab would actually look like and ran the whole course kind of almost virtually, but this year, they'll actually be in the wet lab. So we have a couple of meetings that are set up with the River Project from New York City to help us with warehousing that particular classroom, and those meetings are coming up in the next couple of weeks in terms of what aquatic life and plant life will be actually in the tanks, the touch tank and the wall tanks as well. So very excited about that. We are going to have a ribbon cutting on the evening of the barbecue for the middle school. That date is being decided. For the new activity park that's outside, the game and activity park, we're hoping to include the wet lab in that ribbon cutting, but it is possible we may do two separate ribbon cuttings, but I'll keep the Board informed about that. We have a number of exciting new additions to the high school PGP program, including some twists on the aquaponics and hydroponics lab and some interesting programs with community partnerships. And we have three new project lead the way courses that we're rolling out at the high school for September as well. So these are just a few of the exciting things. There are more, but I didn't want to go through the whole list tonight. We'll do more of them at the August meeting. That's all I have for this evening.
That's it.
That's it.
Prior to the meeting, one of the members of the audience asked me, so it was pretty quiet during the summer here, I guess, right? I said, "I think it's the opposite."
Yeah, it's when we do a lot of the planning.
Yeah, getting ready for September. Mr. Bolden, do you have a report?
I have none, thank you.
You're welcome. I know in lieu of some of the committee meetings, Dr. Johnson distributed extensive notes to Board members about agenda items, but do any of the committee chairs have anything to add? Finance?
Hi, good evening. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, July 18, 2019. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Bolden, Ms. Angley, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. McWork, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. A few of note or that sparked more discussion during our committee meeting are as follows. 10.06, the approval of tuition contracts. This represents the annual review of most of our special education tuition contracts for the 2019-2020 school year, as well as the 2018-2019 extended school year. There will be, I'm sure, a few additional renewals that come to us in future months, but this is a good representation of those contracts. Additionally, 10.07, approval of contracts includes the annual renewal of several contracts, including those with Hopes Cap and Miles Square Early Learning, who are our preschool providers, as everybody knows. Also, on the agenda tonight, we're going to talk about the role of business administrator. During our Finance Committee meeting, we had the opportunity to interview, meet and interview Ms. Joyce Good, candidate for Business Administrator Board Secretary position. If her appointment is approved this evening, we look forward to welcoming her to the administrative team. She will be replacing Mr. Bolden, who will be leaving the district in August. We thank him for his efforts and support of the Board during his brief tenure in Hoboken. Sorry to see you go.
Thank you. Any Board member comments or questions for the superintendent or the finance? Let me move on to public comments. Does anybody in public care to speak on agenda items this evening? No. Then we will move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion, second.
They can call the roll, please.
Absolutely. Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Ms. Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Kupfo?
I have to abstain on 10.04, but yes, on everything else.
Ms. Takarian?
I'm not ready. Yeah, yes, except abstaining from 9.20.
Got it. And Ms. Angley, the consent agenda passes.
Thank you.
Matt? You're coming. Yes.
I skipped over Ms. McWork. Did I? I apologize. And you are a yes. Consent agenda still passes.
This is the opportunity for members of the public to speak about anything else of interest to the Board of Education. Anybody care to speak? I simply state your name and municipality of residence and keep it civil.
I'll try to keep it civil. My name is Ron Bautista. I live on Fourth and Grant here in Hoboken. I'm an alumni, alumnus from Hoboken High School. I've been here for 20 years. I wanted to just congratulate you on all the work that you're doing. You know, sometimes when people ask me, you know, how the school district is doing, I always say, "Listen, I was at the debate team Harvard Model Congress for my senior year. Amazing experience. We went to Boston. I guess that's how I got started into activism and debates, et cetera, that I'm involved currently in. And, you know, in comparison, now there's three debate teams in Hoboken High School. There's the Model UN, there's the Mock Trial, right? And the Harvard Model Congress goes to Madrid now. Like, you know, it's a big difference. I think next year after mine was San Francisco. So I am proud to be a red wing. I want to make sure that everybody knows that we keep on improving our school district, that we have to have those, that constructive criticism, that we have to always come up into, you know, being able to sit with a superintendent and pitch some ideas and bring in some community partners that may be able to help out. I love the openness of the Board in hearing suggestions and any type of initiatives that you may be able to support as well. I, you know, I think that, you know, keep up the good work, keep an ear open with the community. I know it can be tough at times, but, you know, if we keep that conversation going, we can, it just improves it for everyone. So thank you very much, and I hope to continue to hear great things from the school. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other business this evening.
I just want to make one comment. I, for one, as, not just as a board member, but as a parent, I'm very excited about the middle school programs, and I'm excited because my daughter will be going to middle school, and I know she's, she's really excited. I've never seen her actually this excited about school and about the programs at school. So just wanted to say.
Can I add on to that a little bit? Just totally coincidentally, I ran into a parent that I know who has a daughter, my daughter's age, but also a daughter going into the middle school, and that parent, with the daughter standing there, said, "The daughter is counting down the days till school starts and is, can't believe there's still so much summer left." So kudos to everybody who's, all the work that's been done in the administration, principal, the teachers at the middle school for creating that kind of excitement for the children who are going to be attending there for the first time and those who are coming back.
I think Dr. Abraham has done a nice job of meeting with the kids and connecting with them throughout the school year, so I think that helped a lot.
I also, I also noticed that in your memo to the Board, enrollment is up 122 over...
191.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, almost 200.
Yeah, so we, we did a enrollment count from the last day of school to what our on-roll is right now for September, and we all know that there, there's always like a little bit of ins and outs, you know, we call them in the enrollment office, particularly during the month of August. However, they've tended to be somewhat balanced. You know, they, they aren't typically all an exodus. Tends to be a little bit of a balance, but yeah, there's an addition of 191 students. So what we're, what we're actually seeing again is this, this bubble that is continuing to move through. We're enrolling now just about, just over 350 kindergarten children, and when you think about it, we're graduating approximately 100, a little less than 100 high school 12th graders, and the loss of students coming through the district seems to have leveled itself out. And our last smallest K through 8 class is now in eighth grade. You know, I remember when I first started, it was right at that third grade level was the largest class, so it's, it's making its way through. And so when the base continues to stay large, even when you have consistency in the number of families who are actually moving out of the community or selecting other schools, your enrollment numbers are still going to remain high, and that's what we're seeing is happening. So we have gone, yes, from the middle school at seventh and eighth grade of approximately 165 kids this year to a middle school next year, sixth and seventh grade of 100, sorry, 300, about 365 at the middle school is projected. The following year's middle school with 17 sections of, of middle school this year. So we're up from eight sections to 17 sections. Next year's projected, the following year's projected fifth grade rolling to sixth grade will increase that number from 17 sections to 23 sections. So while we did half of a move here at Demarest School on the left-hand side of the second floor, the right-hand side of the second floor will have to be converted next summer for the purpose of housing the remainder of that sixth through eighth grade middle school. So it's an exciting time, and that growth in enrollment is, you know, although it creates a little bit of tension and it puts some, some good challenges on us to kick in our long-range facilities plan and to really maybe even rethink the long-range facilities plan a little bit, which we know we're, we're going to have to, and we're beginning to have those conversations. I don't think any of us would trade that conversation, knowing that the district is growing so nicely and steadily. And the other thing I just wanted to say in closing on my end is, when Mr. Bautista talked about the openness, just to give you an example, we had some parents come in a couple of weeks ago to talk about some choices and the fact of kids moving from the middle school, from the elementary school to the middle school, and the fact that they have to make choices, and sometimes it's difficult. There's so many PGP classes that they want to take, and they're not sure which ones to take, and, you know, sometimes it's difficult to say to kids, "You have three years, and we promise you, if, if you don't take this class this year, you can take it next year. You know, we're going to continue." But the conversation rolled into Gifted and Talented and Johns Hopkins, particularly at the middle school level, and the idea of how, you know, we created this process in scheduling where the children who are eligible to participate in the Johns Hopkins classes had to kind of make a decision of taking the Johns Hopkins classes as one of their PGP classes or two of their PGP classes, and some of the kids were kind of heartbroken. And did we really want to limit kids from taking some of these Johns Hopkins classes when they really wanted to do both? And so we put a little think tank together after the parents left, and, you know, we kind of did a little force field analysis to see, you know, what, what's the real problem here? And are we limiting kids, or is it a good thing where we're saying, you, sometimes in, in life, you have to make choices? But ultimately, at the end of the conversation, we all thought we can make this, we can make this happen. Like, we can figure out a way to make it happen. So what we did was we expanded the options for children who do qualify for Gifted and Talented from two to four, four different options, giving kids the opportunity to take Johns Hopkins in three different capacities, or to choose not to if they didn't want to. One of them was during PGP. The second option was during the academic support period after school, and the third was in an independent track with a contract that we would have families sign with the children. So we're just about ready to send out a letter in the middle school packet tomorrow with, you know, a great news for the families with children that did qualify, that you do have the ability to choose. We heard some of your comments and your feedback. We took it, we thought about it, we deliberated, and we decided to expand the program. So I, I think that we're at a place now where our systems are in place, our programs are in place, and taking input and feedback that is constructive only makes us better. So we're excited about continuing that path at all of our levels, elementary, middle school, and high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Now let's take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting's adjourned.